Good morning and welcome to the preliminary budget hearing on small business. At this time, we ask if you can please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'm City Councilman Julie Menon, Chair of the Council Small Business Committee, and I want to welcome everyone to today's hearing. First of all, before we begin, I want to just say that the committee may not get to all of the questions, so we will be sending up a follow-up letter for any unanswered questions. So I want to again welcome everyone to today's hybrid budget hearing. And today, we're going to be hearing from the Department of Small Business Services on their fiscal 2024 preliminary budget. Small businesses are literally the backbone of our economy, and I believe it is what makes New York City neighborhoods truly one of a kind. As such, I want to hear from the agency on how the preliminary plan is responding to the needs of our small business community. During the last couple of years, as our small businesses dealt with the turmoil of the pandemic, the agency launched new programs such as 40 Open Streets, Small Business Acceleration, Small Business Portal, Small Business Residence Fund, and Small Business Mobile Unit, among others. I have to say that I am disappointed to see that funding for many of these programs is not included in the preliminary plan. Our small businesses continue to need the city's support as they recover from the impacts of the pandemic. I want to know what the agency's long-term plan is for helping small businesses continue to recover from the pandemic. The fiscal 2023 current plan stands at $440.3 million, with $107 million coming from federal funds. Federal funds dropped to $41.3 million in the fiscal 2024 preliminary plan. What programs have been impacted by the reduction in federal funding? How will the city funding make up for the reduction in federal funding? The fiscal 2024 preliminary budget for SBS totals $164.3 million, with $30.3 million or 18.4% proposed for Personnel Services to support 317 full-time employees. Does the agency believe that 317 full-time employees is the optimal number of positions necessary for the agency to efficiently deliver key city services? What positions were impacted by the mayor's vacancy reduction plan? How does a vacancy reduction impact the agency's ability to provide services to the public? It is the council's responsibility to ensure that the city budget is fair, that it is transparent, and that it is accountable to all New Yorkers. This includes equity in funding and assistance. As the Chair of the Committee of Small Business, I will continue to push for accountability and accuracy and ensure that the budget reflects the needs and interests of the city. I look forward to an active engagement with the administration over the next few months to ensure that the fiscal 2024 adopted budget meets the needs and the goals the council has set out. This hearing is a vital part of that process, and I expect that SBS will be responsive to the questions and concerns of council members. I want to thank Commissioner Kim for testifying today. I also want to thank my staff and the staff of the Finance and Legislative Divisions for their hard work and help in preparing for this hearing. I also want to recognize that we've been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Sandra Ung, who is on the Zoom, and I'll recognize additional colleagues as they join. Thank you so much, and Rebecca, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? You may begin when ready. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Menon and members of the Committee on Small Business. My name is Kevin D. Kim, and I am the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Small Business Services, or SBS. Joining me today are SBS's first Deputy Commissioner Jackie Malin and Executive Deputy Commissioner Dinah Shale Gross, along with members of my senior leadership team. I am pleased to appear before you today to offer my testimony on SBS's fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget. SBS's FY24 preliminary budget is $164.3 million, with a head count of 317 employees, 11 higher than at the start of this administration. Our budget includes $71.9 million in pass-through funding to other city entities, including the New York City Economic Development Corporation, or EDC, NYC and Co., and Governor's Island. We serve as a conduit to these entities and thus do not spend or manage any of those funds. The remaining $92.4 million is allocated to SBS's own programs and services. This budget enables us to continue to support New Yorkers in our recovery. A year ago, I sat before you as a newly-appointed commissioner and presented several items from Mayor Eric Adams' Blueprint for Economic Recovery, our roadmap to prosperity. I'm pleased to report that in the year since, the dedicated staff at SBS rolled up their sleeves and got stuff done for the job seekers, businesses, and neighborhoods we serve. We could not have accomplished all we did without the support and cooperation of our partners, including the 76 Business Improvement Districts, or BIDS, merchant associations, chambers of commerce, nonprofit community-based organizations, and of course, you, our local elected officials. Under the mayor's leadership and with support from Chair Menon and the members of this committee, SBS helped build a path to recovery. Tourism and retail spending, for example, are returning to pre-pandemic levels. According to the latest numbers from EDC, NYC's private sector added approximately 200,000 jobs since December 2021, and approximately 13,600 new businesses have launched in the city in the first six months of 2022. We have more positive data to share later in the testimony, but I want to first provide an overview of our agency and its mission. SBS's mission is to unlock New York City's economic potential and create economic security for all New Yorkers by connecting them to good jobs, creating stronger businesses, and building thriving, vibrant neighborhoods. We advance this mission daily through the work of our four main divisions: the Division of Business Services, or DBS; the Division of Economic and Financial Opportunity, or DEFo; the Workforce Development Division, WDD; and the Neighborhood Development Division, or NDD. Our DBS division helps businesses connect to financing options and to free resources, ranging from business courses to legal services. A prime example of the DBS's success story is its work to help open the urban Hawker Food Court in Midtown. A business concept since 2013, the city's first Singaporean food hall finally opened its doors in September 2022, but not before facing numerous regulatory challenges to open. SBS staff worked diligently for eight months to help the 18 small businesses in the food hall navigate permitting processes, inspections, and even staff recruitment. This is just one of the many success stories at SBS. As Commissioner, I have met with hundreds of New Yorkers from Flatbush to Far Rockaway to Fordham Road, who are on similar journeys and appreciate this administration's focus on easing regulatory burdens, including through Mayor Adams' second executive order, also known as Small Business Forward. Thanks to Chair Menon's partnership, we look forward to finalizing dozens of reforms through legislation, putting millions of dollars back into the hands of small business owners. Today, the work of Small Business Forward continues through Mayor Adams' Small Business Advisory Commission and the development of the NYC Business Portal, a one-stop shop for local entrepreneurs to navigate multiple city agencies as we continue to make NYC a city of yes for small businesses. Slashing through burdensome regulations was just the first step. Last spring, SBS launched their new NYC Business Express Service Team, or NYC Best, to save business owners' time and money by streamlining government processes, providing one-on-one assistance with permits and licenses, and guidance to avoid violations and fines. We also prioritize community outreach by creating our first-ever agency-wide outreach unit dedicated to getting our services out into all neighborhoods, focusing on underserved communities. In FY22, for example, we conducted 26 mobile outreach events, and we have already exceeded this in FY23, with 30 events held across 25 different neighborhoods, prioritizing outreach in language and in tandem with trusted community partners. We also never miss an opportunity to promote our SBS hotline, which recently passed 100,000 calls since its launch during the pandemic. Our outreach efforts dramatically increased our ability to deliver other services as well. In FY22, for example, compliance advisers advised 1,622 unique businesses, nearly four times as many as the previous fiscal year. And we have already surpassed that number in FY23 at 1,800 businesses served. Another example is our success with the Commercial Lease Assistance Program. In FY22 alone, we served 16% more businesses than the total number of businesses served in this program between FY18 through FY21 combined. SBS's DEFo unit helps the city's MWBEs, or Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprises, connect to government contracting opportunities. In total, city agencies and authorities awarded $6.5 billion in contracts for MWBEs under the ONE NYC program in FY22, a more than 55% increase from FY21. In addition, over 1,600 individual MWBEs were awarded a city contract last year under the city's former Local Law I program, up 13% from fiscal year '21. This reflects nearly $1.4 billion in contracts to those MWBEs, a record high for the program. In FY23, SBS hosted the first in-person citywide procurement fair since the pandemic, with over 700 businesses in attendance, marking the 30th anniversary of the city's program. One of the business owners in attendance, Jade Singleton, a Black woman entrepreneur from Brooklyn, worked with our team to get her business certified. Because of the connections she made at the fair, she not only secured her first city contract with the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, but landed her second contract soon thereafter. This was also the year the city surpassed our ONE NYC commitment to award $25 billion in contracts to MWBEs by FY25, three years ahead of schedule. Mayor Adams recently announced a new goal to double the city's current rate of contracting with MWBEs. We are already hitting the ground running with the mayor's appointment of the first-ever Chief Business Diversity Officer, Michael Garner, an expert MWBE strategist and leader. Working with our partners in Albany and in the mayor's office of Contract Services, we are proud to have also increased the threshold limit on city contracts for certified MWBEs from 500,000 to 1 million. This will allow MWBEs to compete rigorously for larger contracts. But this administration's commitment to equity and partnership with the state doesn't stop there. Governor Hochul's FY24 executive budget recognized important steps towards achieving reciprocity between our respective certification processes that will make it easier for businesses to contract with both the city and the state. SBS's WDD division works daily to connect New Yorkers to new employment and job training opportunities through our 18 Workforce One Career Centers. In FY22, we connected New Yorkers to 25,000 jobs with an average wage of $18 per hour. Already in FY23, we have served 57,000 New Yorkers with resume help, honing interview skills and job searches, putting them on track to reach our annual goal of 25,000 job connections once again. Additionally, many of our job training programs returned to in-person service in 2022, including NCLEX RN, our eight-month-long program which prepares internationally-trained nurses to pass their U.S. licensing exam. In January, I had the privilege of attending the graduation of Lehman College's first cohort of NCLEX RNs, which Mayor Adams expanded at the start of this administration. There, I met Claudia Urdato, a registered nurse and mother of four from Venezuela. Claudia did not pass the state's licensing test when she studied on her own. However, with our help, Claudia passed the state exam in January, received a job offer from Bellevue Hospital right here in the city, and will start work in April. Our NDD division oversees and guides our network of 76 bids. In FY23, NDD deployed several new grant programs, including awards of nearly $5.3 million to support the formation of new bids and strengthen the operations of our smaller bids, and $2 million to lift up merchants' associations as well. We also awarded $3.8 million to 24 community-based development organizations working in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods through our longstanding programs, Avenue NYC and Neighborhood 360. Groups such as Morris Park Bid and Councilmember Velazquez's district, and the Gateway JFK Bid and Majority Whip Brooks Powers district are some of the many organizations that have taken advantage of these brand-new programs to expand efforts to attract new businesses and clean and beautify the corridors. Thank you, Chair Menon, for your continued support of all of our bids. From day one of this administration, Mayor Adams has been clear that the cannabis industry holds great promise for equity and economic growth. This past August, SBS successfully launched our Cannabis NYC Initiative, which offers technical assistance, education, and support to budding entrepreneurs. Most recently, in partnership with NYCHA, MOE, and the Sheriff's Office, we kicked off our Liftoff Cannabis NYC Listening and Learning Tour, an ambitious series of community education events. Last but certainly not least, we successfully rolled out the NYC Small Business Opportunity Fund. This fund, made possible by a historic public-private partnership between the city, Goldman Sachs, Mastercard Center for Inclusive Growth, and eight Community Development Financial Institutions, or CDFIs, is the single-largest public-private effort by the city in its history to support small businesses. The Opportunity Fund offers loans with a market-leading interest rate of 4% and no minimum credit score for eligibility. The response to this program was strong, with over 10,000 small businesses submitting pre-applications over a three-week period. This response was bolstered by SBS's proactive outreach strategy and historic partnership with multiple CDFIs. We deployed dozens of staff and volunteers going door-to-door to over 500 businesses, including more than 120 businesses in the Bronx on launch day. We also engaged approximately 350 community organizations and business associations to help spread the word in 21 languages. In closing, SBS is dedicated to fulfilling Mayor Adams' clear and bold economic agenda built on equity and inclusivity. Our work with the council has played a critical role in our accomplishments this past year. I look forward to our continued partnership and welcome any questions you may have for me or my team at this time. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your testimony. So I have quite a few questions. All right. I'm going to start with the head count, because in your testimony, you say at the top that there is 11 in terms of the head count, that you're 11 higher than at the start of the administration. But that's not what we're showing. We're showing a decrease of 20 positions for SBS reflected in the fiscal 2024 prelim when compared to the fiscal 2023 adopted budget. So can you explain that discrepancy?
Absolutely. So I think the comment I had made was comparing the head count currently to the head count at the beginning of this administration in January 1, 2022. And when you look at that, we have a head count of 317 currently, and as of December 31, 2021, prior to the administration's start, the head count was 306. The reason why you see the reduction in numbers compared to the previous year is that there were numbers added during the blueprint initiative budget portion, and then some of it was taken back. But at the end of the day, our head count is higher today by 11 compared to when the administration began in January 2022.
Okay, but it's still accurate to say that there's a decrease of 20 positions reflected, as I mentioned before. Because, look, our goal is to make sure that you have the head count that you need. I mean, that's really where we're driving at this line of questioning. So any kind of decrease in head count, given the importance of small businesses and the important work that we know needs to go to help our small businesses, is of concern to us.
Sure. The number that we reflect today, the budget, and the head counts that we have are sufficient to continue doing the great work that the mission of SBS is, to serve the job seekers, the small businesses, and the neighborhoods. I believe that when you look at the data of what we've done in the past year, we have increased services dramatically. The reorganization of our agency to create a dedicated outreach team has had a meaningful impact. And so we look forward to continuing the great work that we've been doing in the past year.
What positions does the agency currently have open and are actively hiring for?
We have a number of positions that are open, but the real positive trend is that since October of 2022, we've filled 37 positions. And even more so, since mid-January, we've had another 16 hires put into various positions. And so the trend is really positive. We've also increased the capacity of our HR team. We are aggressively recruiting. We hired two staff members from the CUNY Civil Path Civil Service Program. We also are looking very closely at the Silver Star Program that the Department of Aging is promoting, the 55A Program. So we're very optimistic about where we're trending at this time.
So how many, maybe I missed a bit, how many are currently open and that you're actively hiring for?
I'll get you the exact number. It's approximately 67, but we'll get you the exact number.
67.
Yes, yes.
And of these 67 positions, are they client-facing positions? Like, what type of positions are they?
Most of our services at SBS are not client-facing. We hire vendors, and we manage vendors to do the work. We have, for example, the seven Business Solutions Centers. We have the 18 Workforce One Centers. But we do have, the teams that are client-facing are in positions that are not vacant at this time. But let me get you the exact.
Okay, because 67, I mean, given the size of the agency, 67 is a lot. So that is of concern to me. So please, we do want to get an update on that and where you are with the hiring and which positions these 67 comprise.
Yeah. As I mentioned, I think the vacancy and labor shortage issues is a national issue. I think whether you're in the private or public sector, everyone's facing this. But at SBS, we're fortunate to have the head count and the budget to be able to continue to do the work. And I think it's not just me saying this, but it's proven in the data of the number of businesses we've been able to serve in this past year alone. I think the ramp up in hiring has been reflected since January of this year. As I mentioned, we've had 16 new hires, and we continue to have offers and a very robust interview pool at this time.
Okay. I want to switch gears and talk a little bit about federal funding. So federal funding through pandemic stimulus funding comprises a significant portion of SBS budget in previous fiscal years. But now, in the fiscal year '24 prelim, 75% of SBS funding comes from city dollars. So what programs have been impacted by the reduction in federal funding?
I think the way to look at the numbers that you're referencing, you have to first understand that $61 million is pass-through money, EDC, NYC and Co., and Governor's Island, so it's not SBS. There's $27 million in council discretionary funds that are part of the numbers that people are looking at when they say there seems to be a reduction in the budget. Then there's also expiring federal dollars, which were one-time recovery programs. That's about $11 million. And then there's $9 million of strategic one-time investments that were made on the Business Portal, for example, that will pay dividends for years to come. And so when you look at the numbers that you're talking about, we took certain programs, like the Commercial Lease Assistance Program that we know was highly effective, that had the support of federal dollars, and now we've baselined it for the same amount in the CTL for the coming year.
So how will the city make up for the reduction in federal funding? And also, is there any head count being impacted by the reduction in federal funds?
So we're continuing our conversation with OMB and City Hall, and this is the preliminary budget hearing, and this is a first step in the long process. But we don't feel that the federal programs that were supported, they were for recovery efforts. And the investments we've made, they've resulted in new businesses being launched. One in nine, one out of every nine businesses that currently exist today launched since the Adams administration began in January 2022. And I think it's a sign showing how much that one-time recovery effort dollars were needed. So in terms of the actual programming going forward, we have a robust plan to continue to help businesses drive.
And in terms of head count impact?
There's no impact to head count.
Okay. So there's a reduction of approximately $139 million between preliminary fiscal 2024 plan and fiscal 2023 adopted budget. This $139 million decrease is inclusive of $61 million of pass-through funding for EDC, NYC, Governor's Island, as you spoke about, and $27.2 million for City Council discretionary initiatives. The remaining $50.9 million is allocated to SBS programs. So I've got a series of questions based on the latter two pots of funding. So 40 Open Streets. The fiscal 2023 executive plan included $1.6 million in fiscal 2023 for the Open Streets program, which, as you know, transforms streets into public space, open to all. Since this funding is not in the fiscal 2024 preliminary plan, is the administration inferring that this initiative is no longer effective?
The Open Streets program was incredibly effective. And we know, for example, the importance of supporting small businesses in all of our commercial corridors. The mayor had made a recent announcement of investment of $375 million in the public realm plaza areas, and DOT is responsible for the Open Streets program. I was privileged to be up in Washington Heights at Kiskaya Plaza with the mayor and Commissioner Rodriguez when they made permanent the first Open Street program that had been launched during the pandemic and talked about the $7 million of funding that was going into that plaza alone as part of that $375 million investment. At Small Business Services, we are here and ready and have always supported all of our businesses in working in the spaces that they find to promote their businesses. And so working together with DOT closely, we have been supporting all of those businesses in the Open Streets program.
So DOT, then, will be taking control of that pot of funding. Is that correct?
DOT is responsible for the Open Streets program, and we've been supporting it. And there were one-time efforts that were needed during the pandemic. But at this time, the $375 million investment in the public realm plaza, I think, is a firm sign, is a strong sign of firm commitment by the administration to programs like the Open Streets.
Okay. In terms of job training and partnerships, so the fiscal 2023 executive plan included $6.5 million in fiscal 2023, $1.3 million in out years to expand the city's investment and bridge training programs. What training programs did SBS create with that funding?
Just in broad stroke, we're continuing our conversations with OMB on all the training programs. But there was, during the pandemic, pandemic-related emergency training programs that had been set up, which are no longer as necessary in terms of, for example, vaccine-for-all workers. So in terms of the overall training programs, we're continuing our conversation with OMB at this time.
So a couple questions on that. So why was the funding not included in the fiscal 2024 prelim plan when clearly New York City workers continue to need this? I understand it's not on the vaccine side, but they continue to need real support.
We're still talking OMB, so nothing has been finalized. This is the first step in the series of steps, multi-steps, that we need to get to that final point.
Okay. We definitely urge continuation of that funding because we think it's very important. Moving to the small business. Moving to the small business portal, as you know, the council passed my bill and the mayor signed to create this one-stop-shop portal. So I wanted to get a sense of an update on that. The legislation stated that by November of 2023, the portal would be operational for the general public. Is that target date still on track?
Yes, we are currently on track of the first, I think, intermediary target date of the summer. There are streamlining of the process, also improvement of the user experience. That intermediary target is on track.
And how many businesses do you anticipate would participate in the portal on a yearly basis?
I don't have that exact number, but my guess is that if you have a portal that we're designing that will streamline and make the life of a small business easier, that almost anybody who knows about the portal will end up using it. And I think that's one of the reasons why in our administration and in our agency, since I've taken over, that outreach efforts in language and deep in the communities has been so important because we want everybody to be able to take advantage of a portal like this.
Yeah, and I do want to recommend you beta test it. I don't know if that, you've incorporated that into the summer plans, but just to work out the kinks so we don't have issues with then.
Thank you, we will be beta.
Okay, excellent. And last question on that, is there still funding in the out-years for the portal's operations?
I think we're in discussions with OMB on that. The one-time investment, large, significant investment is being utilized currently to stay on track, to get the portal up and running by November 2023.
Okay. Moving on to cannabis. So in the fall of 2022, as you mentioned, SBS launched Cannabis NYC and hired a founding director to support the development of a thriving and equitable cannabis industry. What is the budget amount for this initiative in the prelim budget?
The, your question is, in '24 or '23? Preliminary forward? So we're continuing to talk with OMB on that. We made an initial upfront investment last year, as you know. In August of this past year, we were able to launch Cannabis NYC, hired a fantastic leader, someone who's highly recognized in the industry, someone with government experience that led the Portland city efforts in terms of regulating the industry, Dushida Dawson, who has come on board. We're really excited about the launch, liftoff cannabis launch programs that I had mentioned, working with our community partners, in particular with NYCHA and other community partners where we have seen communities that were most harmed by the prohibition on drugs. And so March 25th, we just want to also promote that event out in Brownsville, if people can come, and council members, you're all welcome to come. So we're really excited about where Cannabis NYC is headed and ensuring that all New Yorkers, especially those most harmed by the prohibition on cannabis, can take advantage of the burgeoning opportunities in this industry. It's estimated to be $1.2, $1.3 billion next year alone.
And how many individuals have been hired to support Cannabis NYC?
So currently, we, the, part of what we did to reorganize the agency and create a dedicated outreach team that has 10 dedicated staff members is to support all of our programming. So for Cannabis NYC, just to be clear, the state licenses, cannabis licenses, at the city level, we are here to educate, do outreach, make sure that all New Yorkers know about this opportunity. So the way we look at Cannabis NYC and all of our programming, in effect, is that we have Dushida Dawson, we have someone who is very senior advisor, Warren Gardner, as well, advising her. And then we have our outreach team currently helping to do all these, all the events for liftoff, launching the Cannabis NYC programming. And already we've held one up in the Bronx, we've held one up in Upper Manhattan, and again in March 25th, we're doing Brownsville. They're planning 40 events across the five boroughs to make sure that every community has access to the information needed to participate in this industry.
And how, well, across the five boroughs, as you know, smoke shops and convenience stops are carrying illegal cannabis products that are being marketed to youth with cartoon characters and names, and some of them look like candy stores. So we, as you know, we had a hearing on that. What is SBS in particular doing on this issue?
Cannabis NYC, as I had mentioned, is really focused on educating and outreach to everyone in New York to understand the entire industry. And that includes encouraging people outside the regulated industry to come into the regulated industry. So the strategy of facilitating, rehabilitating, and enforcement is the way SBS is encouraging everyone to look at this issue. We believe that if people knew better the benefits of being in a regulated industry, that they would choose to do so. The enforcement piece of it, we are focused primarily on, on supporting the, what we call the people, the businesses that are involved in the three Es of illegal selling of cigarettes, the illegal selling of vaping items and cannabis products, and also selling products that have confusion in branding to market towards children. And so when you find businesses that are involved in those three areas, that's where the priority in enforcement is currently.
So at the council hearing we held on this topic, I mentioned that when I served as DCWP Commissioner, we were dealing with the issue of K2 synthetic marijuana. At the time, we launched a million-dollar public awareness campaign to educate parents and children that these products were adulterated. They did not contain marijuana, they contained harmful chemicals. We're dealing with a similar situation here. At that hearing, I urged DCWP to launch a similar type of awareness campaign, bus ads, subway ads, just as we did on K2 synthetic marijuana, where we largely eradicated that problem. Will SBS commit to working on some type of public awareness campaign? Because again, I really think it is imperative. We're hearing from so many parents who are deeply concerned about the proliferation of these stores and the marketing of these products to young people.
So we're working very closely with the Office of Cannabis Management, which is the state office responsible for overseeing this industry. We've been working very closely with them from day one on public education, on public outreach, to inform all communities about not just the business side of things, but on the health side of things as well. I think that's why it's important that we have launched this liftoff campaign, where we are planning to be in 40 different neighborhoods in all five boroughs in a short period of time, and that we've already had large audiences appear for the initial launch in the Bronx that I was at, and then in Upper Manhattan, and again in March 25th as well. We also are working on a poison control partnership program with ACS, and we have been spending or committing $1 million for marketing and outreach. That includes the public safety and health aspects that you referred.
Where is that campaign going to be in terms of public outreach?
The campaign, meaning?
The one you, the one you just mentioned?
The ACS?
Uh huh, yeah.
Anybody have details? Oh, so that's, they, they come to the liftoff when we do the launches in the communities.
Okay.
They're a part of it to help educate.
Okay, okay. If we can get details of that, that would be great. Any details that you can send over to the committee. All right, I want to move to MWBEs because I am very concerned that during the pandemic, MWBE contracts awarded from SBS were largely non-existent. So SBS at the time during the pandemic didn't give any COVID-related contracts to MWBEs. How has SBS performed in fiscal year 23 with contracting goals? If you could just talk a little bit about that.
I think it was in my testimony that we were actually up in the number of MWBEs that received contracts by 13%. As an agency, I know that we give over 90% of our awards to MWBEs, probably the largest percentage out of all the agencies in the city. And I'll turn it over to our Executive Deputy Commissioner Gross to elaborate a little bit more, please.
That's correct, Chairman. And I think you're referring to some past reporting, perhaps from last fiscal year, on emergency contracting. SBS had a very, you know, small portion of emergency contracts. And, but for our general contracting, for professional services, standard services, for goods, we continue to maintain one of the highest MW utilization rates in the city, currently over 90%.
Okay, before I go further, I just want to also recognize we've been joined by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers. So continuing on this questioning on MWBEs, so as you know, last week, the Office of the Controller released a report finding that 5.2% of nearly $45 billion in contracts and purchase orders went to MWBEs. Less than 2% went to black-owned businesses. What is SBS doing to ensure that MWBEs are able to participate and succeed in getting city contracts?
Well, first of all, thank you for your support of MWBEs as well. That is one of our top priorities. I think with the hiring of the Chief Business Diversity Officer, the first ever in the city, Michael Gardner, someone who brings expertise from his experience with SCA, School Construction Authority, and MTA, we are already hitting the ground running, organizing, strategizing on how to always improve these numbers. But I do want to also share how the successes of the MWBE outreach and technical assistance program that we've had at SBS, over the past few years, we were able to get the numbers to the point where we reached our one NYC goal three years ahead of schedule. And that's allowed Mayor Adams to be even more aggressive about setting forth future goals. We have also helped raise the discretionary thresholds from $500,000 to $1 million, which I think will immediately impact the number of the smaller MWBEs who can participate in this and, and really benefit from this program. And finally, as I mentioned, we're working very closely with the state to achieve reciprocity in the types of certification programs that we both have. There's no need to have small businesses jump through multiple hurdles to be able to contract with both city and state. So we're working very closely with them on that effort as well.
Yeah, let me just say, first of all, I think it is incredibly important that the mayor lifted that threshold to $1 million because that will obviously result in a much larger amount of contracts going to MWBEs. So I think that was very important. What is SBS doing in terms of partnering with the chambers of commerce with bids? Because one of the problems, obviously, is we need to get more firms into this MWBE pipeline. So what's the public outreach that the agency is doing in that regard?
The chambers of commerce, and not just the borough chambers of commerce, have been very close allies. We've worked with multiple chambers of commerce to make sure that they all know, are aware of our MWBE program. I think this kind of goes back to one of the things I was talking about, about the realignment of our agency to create a dedicated outreach unit. Whenever we have the outreach unit go out, it's not just talking about programs like the Opportunity Loan Fund, or just talking about our commercial lease assistance. They are talking about MWBE certification. They are talking about connecting MWBEs to future government contracting. So we know that this has really had an impact in the number of MWBEs that have been certified, which has increased. And we know that the dollar amounts of the MWBE awards, hitting $1.4 billion, was a record high. So all of the efforts that we are working on now will pay even more dividends as we go forward.
Okay, moving to Moshe, you talked a little bit about in your testimony, business improvement districts. So as you know, my urging to the administration in early 2022, for the first time ever, the executive plan included 5.7 million in fiscal 2023 and $400,000 in the out-years to incentivize both the creation of bids, but also to make sure that for the first time ever, some of our smaller bids would receive city funding, which they could use to help to market and promote small businesses. I just want to get, first of all, an update on how much of that funding has been dispersed.
Well, thank you, first of all, Chairman, for your continued support of bids. We were, we had $400,000 in PS allocated, we have $5.3 million in OTPS. Of that, we have allocated $800,000 to the new bids and $4.4 million approximately to the small bids. Most of that, the awards have been designated. I don't know if the actual funds have been distributed as of today, but we're on, we're very well on the process of doing so. But they have, the process has already advanced very far along.
And what are the agency's plans in the out-years since the funding was reduced to a much smaller amount in the out-years? What are the agency's plans then in those years?
Well, continuing to talk to OMB and in coordination with City Hall, we're, we're going to assess the impact of these funds currently and continue to have these discussions.
Okay. Want to move on before, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague to see if she has any questions. Vacancies, can you talk, and I have more questions, but I just want to make sure to do that. Retail vacancies, I'm incredibly concerned that no matter what neighborhood you go to in the city, we see astronomical retail vacancies. Can you give us an overall update on the retail vacancy rate? And what specifically is the agency doing to address that? And before you answer that, let me just mention, we've been joined by Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez as well.
So we are very much focused on ensuring that the commercial corridors are thriving, and part of it is the vacancy rate, as you mentioned. We know that all of the administration's efforts in the mayor's economic blueprint for, mayor's blueprint for economic recovery has had an impact. We know that, as I mentioned in my testimony, 13,600 new businesses began just in the first six months of this administration. The message that the mayor has made loud and clear about New York City being the city of yes, starting with the premise that we welcome every business here to launch and open up. The easing of regulatory burden on executive order too, thanks to your partnership again, that we're looking to be able to save millions of dollars for New York City businesses on an annual basis this year and including years going forward. So all of those programmings, I think, will, will result in more and more businesses being opened. And again, it's just not my word for it, but one out of every nine businesses, it's not just taking my word, but one out of every nine businesses that are currently open, opened since the start of this administration. And I think the message is getting through. We're also working with Live XYZ, which is, yeah, Live XYZ, which is a program that is designed to get a better count of what exactly the landscape looks like in terms of retail vacancies. And using that data, I think we'll be able to baseline more of our future programming and, and strategy for filling all the stores.
What does the agency show as the overall retail vacancy rate citywide and then borough-wide?
We don't have an exact number currently. I think that number is very difficult to find, but that's why we've engaged Live XYZ for the first time ever on a, on a contract, to be able to give us a better idea of what that looks like. We hear anecdotally about the vacancies, but at the same time, Chairman, and as you and I have done walking the Upper East Side, one of the best parts of my role is to be able to walk all the commercial corridors in the five boroughs. And having done that, I've seen so many of the businesses actually having opened during the pandemic. And you often wonder who does that, but if you recognize that half of small businesses are immigrant-owned small businesses, and so many of them had no other choice but to open, I think you also see anecdotally a lot of the, the success stories of businesses that opened during the pandemic and are continuing to grow now, filling the vacancies that were there before.
And in terms of that new contract, because I did see that tech platform, I did, I saw a demonstration of the software they have, which I think would be incredibly valuable for the public to see. Is it SBS's plan then to post that in real time online so people can actually see in real time what the vacancies are by neighborhood, by borough?
I know that the strategy of utilizing Live XYZ and the rollout is still being discussed, but when we have an answer, we'll.
Great, would really urge the agency to make it public and not just use it for internal data, because again, I think it's incredibly value and important information. Okay, I also want to mention we've been joined by Councilmember Mealy. And now I'll turn it over to Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony today. I also want to be on record. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony today. I also want to be on record thanking you for all of the help that you have provided to the thirty-first Council District since being appointed as Commissioner in light of the many pandemics that my community was going through with COVID-19, with a lot of construction that's happening. I want to spend a little bit of time on MWBEs. That's an area that I'm especially passionate about, and especially in light of the Comptroller's recent report that showed the city has been doing an awfully poor job in utilizing our MWBEs. I think that there is a lot of work that we need to do around supporting our MWBEs. I'm interested in understanding through this budget how SBS will be prioritized in the support and resources needed and necessary for us to, one, support MWBEs and, two, how do we scale them up also? Because what I find is that once they get a contract, it then becomes a major lift to get to that next level, that breakthrough. And so I'm especially interested in, in the work that your agency is doing and will be doing and how you are prioritizing that in this budget.
Thank you, Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, for your question and also for your support of MWBEs and small businesses. I know that we've had a chance to walk the district as well and had meetings in your office, and, and your support for MWBEs is unwavering. So thank you for that. I would say, and I don't know if you had a chance to hear my earlier testimony, but we have, we are very excited about MWBE strategy going forward, the city having hired the first Chief Business Diversity Officer, Michael Gardner, who brings a wealth of experience here. At SBS, we also not just certify the companies, but we do make sure that we provide the opportunities for them to connect. And so last year, we had a thirteen percent increase in the MWBEs who were awarded contracts. At the same time, the total amount of award dollars at one point four billion dollars was a record high ever in city's history. We also put together a major fair, procurement fair, in September at Barclays Center, where we had seven hundred businesses attend. And in my testimony, I singled out a woman named Jade Singleton who came to that fair, got certified, got a contract with HPD, and then we followed up with her to make sure that she could get her second contract as well soon thereafter. So the efforts that we've been doing are having an impact, and the concerns that you have about not just somebody getting certified, but actually getting contracts and then getting a second contract is something that's very much at the top of our priority list as well.
Also, at the urging of the City Council, the administration included seventy-five thousand dollars in fiscal 2023 at adoption to establish a grant program for MWBEs to assist them to compete in their industry. As it stands now, the funds have yet to be dispersed, and the agency is still currently determining the best process to utilize the funding. What is the SBS doing to ensure these funds are dispersed?
Thank you for that question. We, first of all, appreciate that funding source. It required independent rulemaking, and instead of going through that elaborate process, we have been analyzing and looking for the best path forward in utilizing that fund to benefit MWBEs in this fiscal year. So we are actively looking at it. We continue to have a number of possibilities, but we'll definitely give you an update as soon as we come to a decision.
And is funding for this program included in the fiscal 2024 preliminary budget?
Oh, that's discretionary, so I think it's more up to you as council. The seventy-five thousand?
Um, just one, excuse me, the small business, I've moved to my next question, sorry, the Small Business Residence Fund, is that funding for the program, for this program particularly included in the 2024 preliminary budget? And is my understanding that it's an administration funding, not the council?
Seventy-five thousand? I think it came from the Speaker's office, is our understanding.
It's my understanding as administration funding, so if you can let us know.
We'll check and get back to you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm now going to call on Councilmember Mealy for questions.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
For the Small Business Improvement District, is there the four hundred thousand for staff for this program? And have the staff been hired to help the administrators for this program?
There is four hundred thousand dollars in PS money, and we, I believe, have filled our NDD positions at this point. Let me get you the exact numbers, but we know, as I was saying before, that we've had a very brisk hiring rate since mid-January in particular, where we've had sixteen hires and offers go out, and we have a number of more offers going out in the next week or two. And they cut across all the agencies, agency divisions, including NDD, which manages the bids.
Okay, it seems like there is always a delay in registering these contracts. Do you know what's causing this for the delays getting the contract registered?
I will have to get back to you on that, Councilmember.
What is the status of the citywide services for small bids?
So we have contracted to, to get the smallest of the bids back office support. And so we've worked, we're working with the citywide vendors to be able to provide that back office support. That's so necessary for these bids.
And one thing I wanted to, because I have a couple of problems with the bids in my district, what is the, the procedure for if you give the bids resources and you don't know what they're doing with the resources, no improvement? So who is checking this data?
So every bid has its own board, and SBS has a seat on the board. I know you, as a councilmember, has a seat on the board. So we encourage all the boards to actively practice good governance and board practices to make sure that the board, that the bid does what it's supposed to do. But if there are any particular issues that you have in mind, we'd love to discuss with you.
Thank you. I'll leave it at that, that we could discuss at a later date.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Like the twenty-third.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Mealy. We'll turn it back to Majority Leader Brooks-Powers for more questions.
Thank you. Just had a few more questions. So in terms of the, the Business Improvement District support information, you know, you and I talk often about the bids. And so I wanted to know, there is four hundred thousand dollars for staff for this program. Have staff been hired to help administer this program yet?
Yeah, so I would say some. I can give you the exact numbers, but, you know, as I mentioned, we are on a very positive trend in hiring very rapidly. And since January, we have sixteen hires, and a number of offers are going out in the next couple of weeks, including in NDD. So I know that we've hired some, but I, I'll give you the exact numbers.
And it seems like there's a delay in registering the contracts. So what would be the cause from your viewpoint in terms of the delay?
You know, and that's something I need to get back to you on. Yes, I think Councilmember Mealy had asked a similar question, and so we'd love to get both of you the answer.
Okay. And then in terms of the contract budget, what percentage, what percentage of the agency's total budget is the contract budget?
Could you, yes, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's okay. I'm just trying to get clarity on what you mean. How much is
For the contract?
Our operating budget is contracted out to vendors? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
I think we'd have to come back to you on that to get your precise number.
Okay, and when you're coming back, can you also provide a borough-wide breakdown of the number of contracts to small businesses, MWBEs and individuals? I'm particularly interested in looking at diversity within diversity, so black and brown businesses in particular, what that breakdown will look like in terms of the contract as well.
Terrific, okay.
Thank you. I'll give the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to call on Councilmember Mealy for some questions.
And it's only, it's quick. Does SBS track storefront openings and closings? And is there a database in regards to that? That's so important, because I know the pandemic happened, but some of them are still floating. But how are small business services really helping those small mom and pop stores?
So we know how many businesses open. EDC issues reports on that. So as I had mentioned, one out of every nine business in existence currently started since the mayor, mayor's, Mayor Adams' administration began in January first, 2022. Unfortunately, at this time, it's a little bit more difficult to break it out into how many of those businesses are actually retail storefront businesses. But, but that's why the administration, for the first time ever, has engaged a technology firm called Live XYZ that has a platform to help us better understand the landscape of empty retail stores. And I think that dashboard that's going to be used all, by all the city agencies and shared with bids as well, and we're looking into the public, that will give everybody a better baseline of what and where these retail stores might be vacant and what we at SBS and the rest of the city sisters, sister agencies in the city, what we could do to help alleviate that issue.
So you're saying small business services have a vacancy data for each corridor in every neighborhood?
Not yet, but that's what we are almost getting to that point with the use of Live XYZ, is that they will, using technology and people on the ground, go through the commercial corridors and identify where empty storefronts are, and then we'll have that data for you. But currently, we just know about businesses opening in general, and that's more because they filed certificates of incorporation with the state and other ways that they start a business.
Okay, is there any tangible organization or department that can give you a list of vacancies in the area? That, to me, if we help other small businesses that are just struggling and another store that is struggling, could they come together and separate a big building and they rent it out to help each other stay in business? I have done that before, and I was wondering, had the city ever thought about doing that? We need small businesses, but sometimes they need a hand up or leg up, you call it. But if we can have a list that, if somebody come to me right now and say, well, I'm about to lose my business, is there a list that I could say, somebody else is about to lose their business, can we partner them together? If it's a clothing store, you sell t-shirts and this one sell hats. Y'all could be in the same building, long as y'all adult enough to pay the rent properly. Have the city ever thought of that in your department?
Well, thank you for that suggestion. I think that's a great suggestion to consider and look into more closely. I think in terms of your question about other, is there any organization that looks at the vacancies or knows what vacancies are available? The bids do, for example, and so we're lucky that, well, the seventy-six bids in our city are the most robust bid network in the country, in the world, the way it's formed. And we know that they keep very close tracks on the businesses in their district. The merchant associations are making an effort to do that as well, other community-based organizations. But at the end of the day, we understand that the bids, the merchant associations, they're not in every corner of the city, and in particular, LMI communities that don't have the resources to form those kinds of groups. So that's why the city has decided to use and invest in a platform like Live XYZ to ensure that we get a better sense and better headcount, a better count of retail vacancies so that we can help formulate better strategies. And one of the suggestion you made could very well be one of those strategies.
Looking forward. One other question. Hmm, I don't know, it's going to touch on some stuff. I have a, I had a bid, and they used to do the Christmas lights. Beautiful. One of their members, the treasurer, moved out of the country, so it left them kind of open. And now it seemed like since they didn't pay that bill, they can no longer ever get Christmas lights because it's only one organization that does the beautification of the lights, like on every Thor Fair, Macy's, Fort on the street, everywhere. How can we help those organizations reconnect? Or is it proper that, is there extra grants they can do and training to get reconnected for beautifying their neighborhood? Because those Christmas lights are helpful deterrent for robberies, it's lit up. So I think that's something major we should really start doing with every bid.
Thank you for that suggestion. Holiday lighting is very popular, and as you said, also has many other benefits, including promoting public safety. I know that the DOT kind of is overseeing the, the lighting aspect of it. But at the same time, you know, I was just on a panel with the Coral Fellows, and there was a presentation on how lighting is being used around the world in all the different cities. Even in LA, I think on, in West Hollywood, on Santa Monica Boulevard, they were utilizing lights to attract business, tourists to the commercial corridors, kind of like the Empire State Building, changing up the light colors and whatnot. And then, you know, in other countries around the world, they do more dramatic efforts. And so we are looking at lighting as something that is not just decorative and not just for public safety, but something that will attract tourists to commercial corridors. And, and I know NDD in particular is taking a very close look at that right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you have any other questions, Councilmember Mealy? No? Are you sure? Okay. Councilmember Caban, questions? Okay, all right. I do have more questions. So Commissioner, you, you mentioned in response to Councilmember Mealy about these one in nine businesses. Could you be specific about what sectors are you seeing? Is it food sector? It would be interesting to have that type of data.
And we'll get you the exact data, but I do know that across all sectors, it's showing, you know, a robust increase. And, and not just the new businesses starting, we know also a lot of businesses actually moving into New York City and investing in New York City. And those aren't necessarily the smallest of the businesses, but the trickle effect of, the ripple effect of having these big businesses that come into Midtown Manhattan now, for example, Santori Jim Beam moving the headquarters from Chicago to Manhattan, will also really help the small business ecosystem around them. But we will get you more of that, but it has been across all the sectors.
Great. If you can, yeah, give us a breakdown of that. On the commercial lease assistance program, you mentioned that in your testimony. It's obviously a vital program that small businesses need the most right now. Is funding for this program included in the preliminary budget?
Yes, the five million dollars approximately has been baselined.
And has the need or demand for this increased since the pandemic?
Absolutely. As I mentioned in the testimony, I think we served over eight hundred fifty businesses with CLA assistance in this past year, and that was three, that was quadruple or triple the amount of services that we provided over, the total number of businesses we served over a three-year period from FY eighteen to FY twenty-one. So I think not just the demand, but I think it's really directly attributed to our outreach efforts to get the word out there about our program, and especially in the historically underserved communities in language. And those are the businesses that have really been taking advantage of this program. So we're really excited to see the expansion of this, of what we've seen, and the baselining of it is going to be very helpful to many businesses.
Okay, I want to move to the DOE Early Childhood Education Stabilization Fund. The fiscal 2024 prelim plan includes $70 million in fiscal 2023 for DOE Early Childhood Education Stabilization Fund. So SBS has said that it is under the purview of another agency. Why, so could you talk about that and why this funding is going through this way?
Sure, that's EDC, it's under the purview of EDC, so we defer to EDC to talk about that. As you know, the pass-through funding mechanism that happens with EDC, Governors Island, NYC and Co. goes through our budget, but we don't manage or have, or spend any of those particular funds, so this program falls into that category. I do want to correct one thing I just said about the CLA, it wasn't triple or quadruple, it was actually a 16% increase in the number of businesses we serve versus the total number of business over three-year period. But that, again, signifies just how much of a demand, but how much more we're serving small businesses in that particular program. But back to your DOE question, it is an EDC program.
So what is the stabilization fund for, and why is it not going through DOE?
I think we'll tell EDC to get back to you on that.
Okay, okay, we will definitely ask about that, that's fine. In terms of, I want to do get back to one thing on the Commercial Lease Assistance Program. We're hearing from the Chambers of Commerce, from bids, from small businesses, that they do want to see additional expansion of that. Are there plans to expand it further, and if so, in what regard?
I think the success of the program is probably why you're hearing more people talk about it, which, again, I think lends to our successful outreach efforts. I think not just going through our traditional channels of the bids and the chambers and other, over the 350 community-based organization partners that we normally rely on, we have made it an effort to go deep into the neighborhoods, meet people where they are, meet the businesses where they are. We've connected with over 6,000 New Yorkers directly, we have gone into communities and done commercial corridor walks with probably over 40 of the council members now, and I think holding roundtables in communities like Little Pakistan and Brooklyn and Little Yemen in the Bronx, and those kinds of efforts, I think, have really gotten people aware of all of our suite of free services, but in particular, the CLA is something that has shown that increase in usage, and I think the budget reflects that accordingly at this time.
Okay, moving to, I know that NYC and Co. is a pass-through, but I'd like to hear about the agency's plans to market and promote small businesses, given how so many small businesses are still struggling.
Absolutely, I think that's one of the most proud accomplishments, frankly, for me personally, is our promotion of our services, as I just rattled off the number of different New Yorkers we've connected with, but also the number of different communities we've gone into, and the numbers of Mobi, our RV Outreach Mobile Unit going out and hitting more communities already at this time than we did all of FY22. What we realize is that traditional email marketing to small businesses is no longer the only way to reach small businesses. That is still one way, and you need to be creative about the content you send. One of the things that we've discovered also is that small, short videos get a lot more engagement than just words, and also, in language is very important. So one of the things we've done on the social media front is, again, I think something to really highlight as a success for SBS, we've increased our followers across our social media platforms by 10.1%. We have had a 111% increase in engagement, and then this number, I think, is pretty astounding to me, but we have 1 million users now, which is an increase of 316,000 people year over year. And so when we know that people are digesting information in various forms, not just through emails, we are also hitting over 70 ethnic media outlets, as well as part of our outreach efforts, and again, back to the content of the messaging, when we have turned to more video, short video content messaging, we've had an increase of 118,000 engagements and video views, which is an 880% increase year over year. So all of the things that we're doing to get the word out, we know at SBS that we have so many great programs across all of our divisions, but if people don't know about it, then a lot of our effort is for naught, and that's why this outreach effort, that's why the social media outreach effort, meeting people where they are, in the language that they need, in the community centers that they live in, that's been our primary focus.
Do you know what percentage of NYC and companies' budget they are allocating to promote small businesses as part of their marketing?
I don't know that, but I have frequent calls with Fred Dixon, who heads NYC and Co., I sit on their board, I know that we've worked together on trying to find ways to lure office workers, for example, back to the office more, private sector office workers, that we are working together on your shop your local type concept of promotions. They've been great about promoting the, you know, I think, what is it, Live Like Queens? They have a very borough-focused campaign around attracting tourists to small businesses in the other borough, in the, all five boroughs, but especially in the other boroughs, to really focus on saying, hey, this is, you know, the experience you would be going through if you lived as a Queens native, for example, and that has been very effective in promoting small businesses.
One suggestion would be to take that campaign, work with all the major companies that are based in New York, get them the campaign, put the campaign on Taxi TV, on links to really, because I have seen those borough-wide campaigns, but I feel like a lot of New Yorkers are not aware of them, what can we do to really get those campaigns out? And then also, you know, in my past roles as Commissioner, one of the things we've worked on is we partner with the ad agencies in New York City to do really robust ad campaigns, and if you, like, historically even look back, the Made in New York logo was done by Radical Media, we have some of the best and the brightest, most creative ad people housed right in our city, so really utilizing their talents to help to promote and market our small businesses.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea, and we'll continue to explore all options. You know, just on the social media front, at last, you know, I do want to just really highlight our comms team and, you know, the vacancy issue that you also raised, how important it is to take interns and nurture them, and we were able to find somebody who was an intern and has now a full-time role, who's really converted our video social media platform, and having our mobile unit turn into a caricature called Mobi, and we have Mobi doing Urdu and Spanish and Russian and all these other different languages, but I think all about the promotion of different venues and platforms is incredibly important to promote small businesses.
Okay, moving to Workforce One Centers, I have a number of questions there, because obviously we're all familiar with the unemployment numbers in the city, and particularly, State Controller, as you know, released a report a number of months ago, really focused on very high unemployment numbers for youths in the city. What is SBS doing in terms of addressing that in the Workforce One Centers?
Let me turn it over to Deputy Commissioner.
As I think you know, we have 18 Workforce One Centers throughout the five boroughs, staff with account managers who connect with businesses, and source candidates, you know, from all parts of New York to fill their open jobs. We do typically in a year about 25,000, connect about 25,000 people into jobs paying 18.35, I think, an hour, I can get you an exact number.
25,000 is a number? And what's the partnership with NYCHA? What are these Workforce One Centers, what are you doing to promote jobs for NYCHA residents in particular?
We have, they're an important community partner, we do recruitment events with them, we help connect them to the jobs.
And 25,000, can you be more specific? So these 25,000 individuals have been placed in jobs?
25,000 jobs we filled, yes.
And is SBS tracking what happens with these individuals?
To some degree. It's a voluntary service, and so we don't have any hard data, but through our partnership with the New York State Department of Labor, they track in the aggregate, what the overall retention is at different points in time, post-connection to a job.
And how is the agency marketing Workforce One? What's the public outreach around that?
It is a combination of all the things that Commissioner Kim just detailed for you.
And in addition, Workforce One has their own social media platform, and they do their own social outreach, not just social outreach, they do their community outreach as well with all of their partners. So it's really, you have all of SBS and all of Workforce One Centers co-promoting everything that happens at the Workforce One Centers. And I think one of the things to really highlight is that the average wage there is $18.25 above minimum wage.
It would be very helpful if, for the agency to also let every council member know about the Workforce One sites that are anywhere in their district or adjacent to their district, because council offices can promote it in the newsletter, same for the community boards, so really making sure that we're reaching as many people as possible, particularly given the unemployment numbers, I think would be very, very helpful.
And I think that one other thing about Workforce One Centers is our training programs as well, it's not just about connecting them to jobs, but also connecting them to training programs. There's training programs in occupational training, construction site safety, there's commercial driver's license, healthcare industry, so, you know, that's, thank you for helping us spread the word on that as well.
No, it's so important, so council wants to definitely be a resource in that regard. In terms of the budget, what percentage of SBS's total budget is the contract budget?
We got that question a little earlier, we're going to need to come back to you with specifics.
Okay, okay, so you're going to get back to us on that? And what measures has the agency taken to ensure that there's an equitable distribution of contracts to small businesses and individuals in all five boroughs?
I think Councilmember Brooks Powers had asked about the distribution, we'll get that to you as well, but in terms of the way we look at our discretionary funding, I mean, we are very much top of mind, equity in everything that we do and all of our programming. I think Executive Deputy Commissioner Gross had pointed out also that our agency had the largest percentage of MWBE purchases, over 90%, and so I think that's just one example in reflection of how much we prioritize equity.
In terms of, we talked a little bit earlier in your testimony about burdensome regulations, can you give an update? Because again, that is one of the most frequent refrains I hear from small businesses across so many different agencies, can you give an update on reducing the burdens of regulations?
Absolutely, as you know, on just day four of this administration, Mayor Adams announced Executive Order 2, or also known as Small Business Forward, where we had the exercise, I myself, co-chairing the committee with Deputy Mayor Maria Torey Springer, working very closely with Chief Efficiency Officer Melanie LaRaca, taking a close look at the regulatory agencies and which violations were on the books that posed a particular burden on small businesses. And so what we did was to see which of those violations on the books could be modified into a cure or warning period, with the emphasis of placing education first. Then we also took a look at which of these regulations could actually be removed from the books altogether, and we found 30 of those, and then we also found regulations where we thought the fines could be lowered, again, with the mindset of let's educate small businesses first before punishing, and in close partnership with you, we're trying to get the final pieces that require legislative change through, so that all of the reforms that we've identified can be implemented. We've already implemented a number of the policies that could be internally just changed within the agencies, but these last remaining items require legislative change, and thank you for your partnership on that.
Absolutely, okay, Councilmember Mealy, I think, has a few more questions?
Yeah, just, that was, you said reform about the legislation in regards to helping some of the small businesses. What percentage of the small businesses have complied with changing the signs on their building? I think, well, when I was here last time, I voted against it, because I felt it would be a hardship to small businesses to revamp and get a whole new sign. Do you know what percentage have applied, or which ones are still not in compliance? And have some of those fees been reduced in regards to that? To me, that's a hardship to small businesses, now that they have to take off their old sign and put a new sign on it. Or the new legislation that they have to get a gate, put in a whole new gate that you could see through, that's a hardship to small businesses. So how many people have complied, and do you have a database on which ones have not? That can make or break a small business, they could go out of business because they don't have $5,000 to get a whole new gate that you could see through, in which normally it's only the gate they had for 20 years. Especially in regards to the pandemic.
Thank you, Councilmember, for recognizing the challenges that small businesses face, a lot of times with regulations on signage and other aspects. On this particular question, I will need to get back to you, because I'm not sure exactly what data we have, and if we have it, we'll definitely share that with you.
Okay, I was just thinking, with the workforce, the workforce, you did say you're going to get back to all, to let every council member know which ones?
Yes.
In the area. How much is your advertising budget in minority neighborhoods? Or in general?
Well, I think we have really emphasized in-language advertising promotion, also in communities that are historically underserved, and I think that's reflective in the over 70 ethnic media outlets, for example, that we use. At the same time, I think our social media platform, the priority that we place on that helps get the word out in all the communities. I think also a lot of the younger generation, however you want to define younger, but I think everybody is just a lot more social media savvy, and I think that's really helped to get.
We still have some. Do you advertise an Amsterdam newspaper? What is that budget?
We do, actually, we do advertise an Amsterdam budget, I can get you the exact number, but like I said, over 70 ethnic media outlets, community-based outlets.
Okay, okay, how often do you work with Chamber of Commerce?
Very close.
Partnership, because I don't know, Chamber of Commerce came to my neighborhood and partnered with businesses and helped some of my store owners with $5,000, $10,000. That was so phenomenal, that it took some of my businesses out of the red, out of the black, to they green now, they bring their money. So that was not a loan, that was just a gift from businesses. Have y'all, have Small Business Services consider partnering in, like now Amazon is in East New York? Have them give grants or gifts, or whatever you call it, you can call it, and y'all present it to some store owners who are really struggling, still in the community? I feel that would be a great way. I had it done in Brownsville, Bedford-Stuyvesant, Ocean Hill, I haven't did it in East Flatbush yet, so have you thought about partnering that manner?
Absolutely, we work very closely with the Chambers of Commerce, and not just the borough Chambers of Commerce, we worked with other trade associations as well, I think the...
Do they give back also?
I think they all give back in many ways, I think in terms of...
No, I would like to know financially, do they give back?
I think in terms of a specific programming that you're referring to...
It's not a program.
Well, the specific idea that, the concept, I think that we, in this administration and SBS, highly value public-private partnerships. SBS highly value public-private partnerships. I think that's part of what you meant when you said like Amazon as an example. I think it's reflected in the Opportunity Fund that we launched with Goldman Sachs and Mastercard. We've also been discussing, for example, we had the mayor sign an MOU with Korean Air, which, you know, is based in JFK, and Korean Air committed to helping use MWBE suppliers, for example, and also hiring CUNY interns. I think that's where, you know
Yeah, but you talking about, just like the airport, none of that really come trickling down to the small businesses. This is an opportunity that it could be direct. And small businesses have to jump through so many hoops if someone do give them funding. This is a perfect way that giving back to the community would be great. So I understand it. What's the memorandum of understanding that the mayor did? Could you explain it to me? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's just, I think the idea was to continue to highlight public-private partnerships, to take companies that necessarily might not have been aware of MWBE programs and MWBE supplier bases and
So how is that going?
Well, it's, we're working on it. We just recently launched it, but I think the idea is to get as many private partners involved in this. And one of the things that our MWBE team has is a very robust online directory that we created and actually improved dramatically during the, during the pandemic. And it's one of the tools, when the questions were posed about how do we improve MWBE utilization rate, this online directory is
Do you know some small businesses are still not online or computer savvy?
Yes.
So how does it trickle down?
Right, so I think the chambers, we've worked very closely with chambers on the ground. Last year, I know that they were going to stores and having
That's how it happened.
small businesses help start their own websites, for example. And we provide a lot of free education courses, online courses that's accessible at any time for, for businesses to also get on, digitalized and be on the web as well.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to powwowing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Mealy. And I just want to reiterate what the council member said, because we know that potentially up to a third of New York City businesses are not fully utilizing online, you know, they either don't have a website, they don't have online marketing. I have a bill, as you know, to create the Office of Small Business Digitalization, which would then be housed at SBS to help small businesses with websites and online platforms. So just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. We've been joined by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan, so I'll turn it over to him for his questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairman Ennin, and good morning, Commissioner. Good to see you. First, I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate how responsive SBS and you personally have been as issues have come up in my district too with small businesses. You've come out to the districts with me, visited and spoke with businesses in Almerst and Jackson Heights. And then especially appreciate when, in working with immigrant-owned businesses, the priority you've made it to, to ensure they're connected with resources, especially language-accessible resources, which is very important for my district. So I really do appreciate that. One point I wanted to just ask about, I know it's been touched on before, but just to emphasize again, one of the biggest issues that we see when it comes to small businesses, and especially for immigrant-owned small businesses, is access to legal services when it's, and not just for lease negotiations. I know the commercial lease assistance program, but as I understand it, it's also limited in scope in what they can do. It's negotiations or advice on negotiations, but not really full representation. And, you know, as a former legal services lawyer myself, that's one of the things that really frustrates me the most because I know how crucial, you know, my background, as you know, is the housing context, but it's very parallel to the commercial context where there's no protections for lease negotiations. Commercial landlords can increase the rents drastically overnight and, and really, you know, engage in predatory behavior towards small businesses. And so that's where especially having legal representation is crucial, because a lot of these small, commercial landlords, they can become so predatory precisely because they know small businesses don't have access to lawyers. And that's, of course, magnified for immigrant-owned small businesses. And so just wanted to get a better sense, one, emphasize the importance of legal services for small businesses, and also would love to hear a bit from you about what SBS can do to both expand the scope of legal services through the programs you already have. And if not, you know, maybe even engage, you know, law firms or pro bono legal services to work with small businesses, with city government, but some way to really enhance the capacity of legal representation for these difficult lease negotiations.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question and also for your comments previously. The small businesses definitely require a whole suite of legal services, even just to get started. And so we NYC, we have a program, Women Entrepreneurs NYC, where they do help with pro bono legal services to help get businesses launched and started. At the Business Solution Centers, seven around the city, we also provide some of the startup legal counseling pro bono. The MWBE contract, contract legal services also provides support for MWBEs when they're dealing with government agencies to contract out. So legal services is a, is a top priority in however many ways we can try to support the small businesses. I think commercial lease assistance, as you referred to, in our testimony, we pointed out that the five million dollars has been baseline. First of all, that wasn't in the testimony, but the five million dollars has been baseline because we've seen how much it's been needed by small business owners. The amount of people and businesses that we were able to serve with the CLA program just last year was sixteen percent more than the total number of businesses we helped serve back in fiscal year eighteen through twenty-one. So over three years combined, we were able to have a sixteen percent increase in the number of businesses served just last year alone. So we know that this is important coming out of the pandemic. Many of the businesses had arrears, and so negotiating with their landlords on a level playing field was something that was a top priority.
Thank you, and appreciate the response. One thing I'd urge too is to see, you know, both as in these budget, you know, negotiations we have now, of course, support for, you know, commercial lease assistance program and more funding for it too, but also any other creative ways to look at expanding legal capacity. Because what it really is, is a capacity issue. A lot of the organizations just don't get enough funding to be able to do larger and broader scope negotiations. So, you know, I do wonder if there's any way for SBS to look at, you know, possibilities there to expand the program and also other creative solutions, whether it's working with, you know, the City Bar Association, State Bar Association, you know, or through pro bono programs to expand it. Because there's a lot of legal services available, you know, on the corporate side for large corporations to engage in, you know, some of the most sophisticated commercial lease negotiations. But it really just bothers me how for our small businesses, you know, they're not able to access that kind of legal representation, and they deserve the same exact kind of representation, if not, if not better. So I just, you know, urge you all to think about ways to expand that capacity in a more creative way.
Oh, and I really appreciate that suggestion. I know with Brendan McGuire, Chief Counsel, he started a pro bono relationship with private law firms to bring them into city government service for a year. And I think that we've been looking at that at SBS, but like you said, maybe I didn't think of it the way particularly you just said it about bringing that person in to help represent small business owners in some ways, if possible. But anyway, we're going to continue to try to think out of the box as you are too. So thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you so much. So that concludes our questions for the administration. Commissioner, I really want to thank you for your testimony today. There are a number of different follow-ups that, you know, that we want to get, but I think I also want to thank my colleagues for their line of questions, because I think there was some productive back and forth and ideas. So we very much appreciate that. And now we're going to move on to the public testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. And you must wait for the sergeant to announce that before you can, can begin delivering your testimony. I will now call on our first panel, Erin Pisco-Pink and Karina Kaufman-Gutierrez. Erin, you can begin when you're ready.
Hi, good morning, Chairman and members of the New York City Council Committee on Small Businesses. My name is Erin Pisco-Pink, and I'm testifying today on behalf of the New York City Bid Association, where I serve as a volunteer co-chair of our Contracting Working Group, and I'm also the Executive Director of the Grand Street Bid in Brooklyn. The New York City Bid Association represents all of the city's seventy-six business improvement districts, which are as diverse as the city itself. We're proud to serve nearly three hundred miles of commercial corridors, including around a hundred thousand businesses, and we invest more than a combined one hundred and sixty million dollars back into our communities. We've worked harder than ever during the pandemic to support our city's economic recovery, providing critical public safety and sanitation services, as well as running new programs such as Open Streets and leading advocacy for open storefronts. We're very grateful for the partnership of Mayor Adams, Commissioner Kim, and the City Council over the past year. In particular, we want to thank Chairman Ennin for her advocacy and support of additional funding for small bids to deliver critical services, as well as Mayor Adams and SBS for answering that call. As part of the rebuild, renew, reinvent blueprint for economic recovery, Mayor Adams laid out an ambitious plan to form new bids, expand current bid catchment areas, and to provide additional assistance to small bids to serve districts across the city. We know that many small bids are already hard at work to deliver on the promise of this funding, which is being put to use on everything from graffiti removal and street beautification to lights for Ramadan celebrations and business attraction efforts. Unfortunately, since this is a new program, bids are now rushing to deliver these services as quickly as possible before the fiscal year ends, which is challenging. It's our sincere hope that this critical funding is renewed and ideally baseline so that bids can strategically plan to use this funding on our most important needs of our districts moving forward. We strongly urge Mayor Adams and City Council to continue to support small bids through this new program. In addition to critical work our bids do on the ground, we're proud that two bid leaders, Matthew Bauer and Nina Flores, have been serving on the mayor's Small Business Advisory Commission. We hope that we can continue to work with SBS, the mayor, and the council to advance reform efforts, including four key priorities identified by the Bid Association's Regulatory Reform Committee. Those are, one, requiring that drafters of regulations directly affecting small businesses, be it councils considering legislation or agencies in rulemaking, analyze and disclose economic impacts on those businesses prior to enactment. The recent DSNY trash statute rules are a recent example of an agency not fully considering the impact on small businesses. Two, requiring that any new or existing enforcement actions are consistently and evenly applied to all businesses. Enforcement should not come as a surprise, and businesses should never feel that their neighbors are receiving unequal treatment. Three, unfunded mandates on small businesses should be limited in use and carefully scrutinized. Four, the Bid Association wants to fully assist SBS in the planning and rollout of the new small business portal that's currently under development. We're very grateful for the partnership of the mayor, Commissioner Kim, and the City Council. We look forward to continuing our important work with your support.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Karina Kaufman-Gutierrez, and I'm the Deputy Director of the Street Vendor Project. We're a membership-based organization that champions the rights of street vendors as small businesses to contribute to the life and culture all across New York. And thank you, Chairman Ennin, Councilmember Krishnan, Councilmember Kavan, and Councilmember Mealy, for the opportunity to testify today. As the only organization that serves street vendors all across New York City, we truly are the one-stop shop for, for this underserved population and have been providing critical services for street vendors since 2001. And we're respectfully requesting continued and expanded support from New York City Council this year to expand our essential small business consultation program for street vendors. Vendors are a growing workforce of over twenty thousand and come from some of the most marginalized communities all across New York City, specifically immigrant communities of color and low-income households. Approximately ninety-five percent of street vendors are immigrants, many of whom choose to become vendors for a variety of reasons, to own their own small business, to balance childcare responsibilities, and often because of the close connections they hold with the communities they serve. SVP did do a survey of over two thousand of our members in two, 2021, and found, you know, many do, do operate at the margins of the formalized economy. Thirty-three percent did not have bank accounts. Ninety-six percent have never received business training from any city agency. And during the pandemic, ninety-seven percent of our two thousand members that were surveyed did not receive any small business loans or grants from any level of government. The street vending industry has grown exponentially over the last three years, as many New Yorkers found themselves unemployed during the pandemic, which has really hastened the need for robust small business services designed specifically for the vending community. And so in 2020, we had created a small business consultation program to provide a holistic approach to establishing financial independence, independence, self-sufficiency, and small business growth for vendors. And through this program, which operates now in six languages for a staff of ten, we provide our members with the tools, resources, and skills to grow their businesses, including assistance with setting up bank accounts, taking e-payments, and using social media to market their businesses. And this is specifically targeted for the street vendor population, many of whom are older immigrants with limited digital literacy. And we conduct outreach to the vending community through phone banking, street outreach, membership meetings, and we have an open-door office policy as well. In the past year alone, we've conducted over five hundred individual consultations with street vendors in six different languages. And I just wanted to note that fifty-nine percent of those consultations were with female street vendors. And since we launched this program, it has grown since 2020. In 2020, it was two hundred and ten consultations. In fiscal year 2021, it was three hundred and eighteen. So it is just, the demand is booming. I just wanted to, to close by saying thank you for, for the opportunity again to testify, and that by empowering street vendors to improve their financial literacy, our services really help them integrate into the formalized economy. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let me turn it over to Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you so much, Chairman Ennin. Thank you for your testimony today, and thank you to the Street Vendor Project for all the great work that you do advocating for the, for our street vendors across the city in, in great need of, of resources and services. One question I just had was, can you talk a bit, Karina, about the, the need for a larger number of licenses for our street vendors? As I understand it, too, there was legislation passed to increase that amount, but the implementation of it has been very slow. And can you talk a bit about why that's important to make sure that's implemented as quickly as possible? And also with the funding that you all are testifying and seeking, wouldn't that also help to make sure that street vendors would be able to navigate the very bureaucratic process to obtain the licenses that, that have already been awarded or that they can apply for?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So when we're talking about red tape for small businesses, street vending is really the biggest of all red tape. As folks may, may be aware, there has been a cap on the number of permits and licenses for vendors. So for folks who sell merchandise, who are not military veterans, there are only eight hundred and fifty-three total general vendor licenses for the entire city, and that's been in place since nineteen seventy-nine. And for food vendors, there are only two thousand eight hundred total mobile food vendor permits for the entire city, a cap that's been in place since nineteen eighty-three. So there's actually no legal way to become a street vendor business in New York City. The only way right now for people to obtain a permit to operate a street vendor, mobile food vendor unit specifically, is to rent one on the underground market, right, which you have no legal ownership over. It's not like the taxi medallions where they can be leased, which is its own, its own issue in itself, right? But here, there's actually no legal ownership or transfer of ownership. And so this has created that, that underground economy for renting permits at these exorbitant prices. And for general vendors, again, there's just no way. And a lot of that translates over into the types of services that are offered to vendors right now. Because there's no way to get into this system to become a legal street vendor, there's also a dearth of, of services that exist in terms of small business training for street vendors in particular. That's something we often run into as a, as an organization. People come to our office and say, hey, I want to become a vendor. How do I do it? I want to do it the right way. And we have no advice to give them. So going over to the question about the implementation of Local Law 18 of 2021. So that law was passed to create a new system of supervisory licenses that is exclusive to mobile food vendors. So this is starting to move the permitting system that vendors have, for food vendors specifically, into supervisory license system, which means that the holder of the license will be the individual. So you can't, that person has to be there anytime the cart is open. So it kind of cuts out the ability for there to be an underground market. That person has to always be present. It didn't, it will increase the number of supervisory licenses available to vendors by 400 each year over the course of 10 years, so for a total of 4,000. Those were supposed to be implemented and released in July 2021. And here we are, or sorry, in July 2022. And here we are in March 2023, and those have yet to be released. And again, it's only 400. It's a significant amount for those 400 people who've been on a waitlist for 15-plus years to be able to finally legalize their business or formalize it. But we have yet to see or hear when those will actually be released. The waitlist has been formed. The waitlist is about 10,000 individuals. And that only includes people who received, who took their Department of Health courses and received their mobile food vendor license prior to 2017. So anyone who's actually tried to even, you know, get their own, get their certification to become a vendor after 2017 is not even on this waitlist of 10,000 people. So to the final part of your question, and I apologize for taking up so much time. But the funding request here is, you know, really to, one, we support folks to navigate this system. A lot of people come in and try to learn about how do I get an I-10 number? How do I get a New York State Sales Tax Certificate of Authority? How do I get on the waitlist? How do I read this letter I got in the mail from the Department of Health? That's only in English, but relates to my permit. And so a lot of those kind of intake services, that's, we are the one-stop shop in the one place. We get referrals from other organizations, from other council, from council members that come to our office. And so this would definitely help route people to that and provide language support to be able to do that as well. As well as, you know, the small business consultation services beyond business compliance is also to help people grow their businesses, right? Not just in this crisis emergency mode, but develop a, you know, a signature business card to get online with an Instagram so people can learn about their businesses, things along those lines.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mealy.
Thank you. I would love to have your information. How many of these vendors, veterans, come in to seek your support?
It's a great question. So we have a veterans committee within SVP, where the Street Vendor Project. And so last year, I believe, we served 183, between 180 and 185. I don't want to get quoted on the three. Of folks who came into our offices or requested support.
So do your organization help if some of these vendors are being harassed or taken advantage of? Do you have any legal people in your office in regards to that?
Absolutely, yes. That's, we do often.
Is it a good percentage of people coming in letting you know that it's almost like mafia-type stuff taking their license, even though it is their license? But people are taking their license and abusing it? So I like the Local Law 18. So I would love to get that information or to visit, or I could sit down with you in regards to the veterans. They have, some, majority of the veterans feel they are being x-ed out of their veteran license, you know, the vendor's license, in which they were the first ones who received the license. And now they're the ones can't get on a right corner in Manhattan. And they had their license first. So to me, charity starts at home. If they had it first, they didn't serve us in the war. We're supposed to look out for them, make sure they can make a living on their own. So I would love to work with you in regards to that.
Absolutely.
And with the New York City Bid Association, how, how many contracts you feel that is going to be rushing now to fulfill their contract before the end of this budget, June?
There are 53 bids that were eligible as the small bids that could apply for the funding. My understanding is that our contracts started to be registered yesterday. I personally received my registered contract yesterday. The scoping happened previously. So I think there's been opportunity for some of us to start the work before the contract was registered, in good faith.
They would have to use their own money, though, now?
Correct.
How many? That's a problem. I believe the controller made a big thing about it today on the news in regards to, we are not serving the small businesses on these contracts. If they have to use their own money, get a loan just to survive until that contract is...
There are two sides to the coin there, for sure. And it is really difficult for small bids to start doing this work with our own reserves, essentially. The other side of that, to commend SBS for the effort they've put in in this fiscal year, they've reinvented the contracting process to try to streamline this and make it easier for us and to get money into our bank accounts faster. So I remain hopeful that that's the direction we're heading. But I very much appreciate your comments that it's difficult and you are correct.
We must do better. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the next panel, which will be on Zoom. This panel will consist of Greg Morris, Angelica Novoa, Beatrice Aharo, and Alex Stein. Greg Morris, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Starting time. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for making this opportunity, Chairman and Councilmembers. It's great to see you. My name is Greg Morris. I am the CEO of the New York City Employment and Training Coalition, a 25-year-old organization focused on supporting and ensuring resources for the workforce development providers in New York City. It's a 220-member-strong organization, so 220 organizations, focused on supporting the alignment of workforce development and economic development in the city, focused on reducing barriers to employment access, focused on supplying every New Yorker with the skills, training, and resources they need to find a quality job. I'm bringing this to the table today because we see the investment and support the investment in small businesses. Nearly half of New Yorkers, as you know, find employment. The city's workforce finds employment within the small business sector. So we are champions of small business, and we support commitments and resources to ensure that they have what they need to thrive in New York City. And let's face it, this is a particular moment in time when New York City, as it relates to our unemployment rate, we are not doing as well as other cities. There are some specific reasons for that. The unemployment rates specific to young adults has surged. And I also want to note that there's a significant number of New Yorkers who've gotten on cash assistance in the last year because they are struggling. So I say all this to say, the commitment that our city needs to make, and our mayor did a great job of highlighting jobs in his state of the city, we certainly support that effort. But you have to make the commitment to make that real. That includes a focused commitment on job training, readiness, and support services to ensure that New Yorkers can find pathways to those careers that can ensure 21st century success in New York City. I just want to flag, one note, job training programs tend to be connected to lots of different employer opportunities. I'd like to see the council support a new initiative focused on connecting job training to small businesses because of the unique needs of our small business community. I also want to support the council's effort to think about how the council holds the city accountable for the investments it makes in workforce development to ensure that it hits every sector the right way. And on final notes, and this is specific to yesterday's hearing related to finance and today, as you ask questions of the city, as you ask questions of city agency in relation to the data in terms of who's getting hired for municipal workforce, I think it's very important that you hold folks accountable and ask, and continue to press on the question, because it wasn't answered yesterday in the City Council hearing on finance, as to how it is that the hiring hall model that's been put in place with the municipal workforce, how that's actually resulting in employment placements. So again, I would challenge this council to continue to press the city to say, if the municipal workforce has opportunities, here's how we know who got hired and how often and how. I know my time is up. The last note I will make for you, of course, is that I support every effort made to think about portals that connect opportunity and training. I would just encourage you to seek to connect workforce development providers with city agencies and employers to make sure those portals work for everyone. We want to make sure that data makes sense. We want to make sure folks have access. And we want to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to have a quality job now. And that requires us to rebuild a workforce development structure. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Greg. Thank you for those suggestions and for the work you're doing. Appreciate that.
Now we go to Angelica. Angelica, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Starting time.
Hi, good morning. My name is Angelica Novoa. I'm the Director of Training and Education on New Immigrant Community Empowerment, NICE. We are grateful to share our testimony today on behalf of our organization and the thousands of immigrant workers, day laborers, and families in New York City. We urge the City Council to invest in the Day Laborer Workforce Initiative, the construction site safety training, and the low-wage worker support to continue the work that NICE provides to over 18,000 immigrant workers per year. Immigrant workers, especially newly arrived immigrants, day laborers, and women experience rampant wage theft, pervasive construction accidents, unchecked workplace hazards, and lack of access to free Spanish culturally dignified training. The goal of the Day Laborer Workforce Initiative is to work together with NICE and other job centers, addressing these issues by connecting workers to critical services, providing training on health and safety, legal rights, leading wage-staff clinics, facilitating access to good jobs, and more importantly, creating safe, dignified spaces for day laborers looking for a job. Last year, over 9,000 armed workers used NICE Job Center, and we dispatched over 1,200 jobs. In the last two years, our membership has increased exponentially, making these services very important and essential, more ever than before. We have participated in, we have members that have participated in a construction site safety training in the last year, over 3,200, and also in our professional development skill training, which includes many abilities. Through our partnership with SBS and Site Safety Training under Local Law 196, NICE has provided over 2,000 SSD cards to a member. And we have worked tirelessly with the use of the new Training Connect Card. So we would like to urge the council to renew and expand the Day Laborer Workforce Initiative budget for fiscal year '24 to $4,875,000 to increase the access to workforce development and training opportunities for immigrants, low-income New Yorkers, and day laborer centers. We also urge the council to renew and expand the Site Safety Training funding under Local Law 196. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now go to Beatrice. Beatrice, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, and thank you to Councilmember Adams for this opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Beatrice Agero, and I'm the owner of an aged restaurant in Astoria. I'm a member of Queens Together and the New York City Hospitality Alliance. The pandemic is an important backdrop for many restaurants and small businesses here in New York City. And as many of us know, 33% drop in restaurants keeps us eager to find resources to stand in the gap. Technical support, grants, and contracts, aspects of business life that keeps us resilient around tax preparation and administrative support, marketing tools, and opportunities such as this forum this afternoon that gives small businesses and restaurants a chance to both be heard and also to listen to the different levels of decision-making that come to bear on everyday operations. Forums such as these also helps to enrich our own work as small businesses and allow us to tap into both the minds and the hearts of our community. Some of the projects that have helped to support businesses, small and large, are the revitalization efforts of downtown Jamaica made possible by the Councilmember Adams' office and work. And those are the kinds of opportunities that allow us to contribute to the economic vibrancy of Queens, of New York City, and of New York State. One of the areas that I think could benefit from more attention is the conversation around MWBE certification, MWBE as an umbrella. Perhaps the equity work that the MWBE umbrella is intended to achieve may not be achieving its intended results if 2% of the MWBE contracts awarded are going to black entities. Perhaps a consideration to look deeply into the breakdown of the M by ethnicity and WBE accordingly might help us in that area. Organizations like Queens Together have really stepped up over the past few years to support small businesses and restaurants with technical support, with grants and contracts, with marketing support as well, and allowing us to provide catering or food relief opportunities, and really to support our neighbors during the seasons when things were at its worst. We look forward to continued collaboration and support from the Small Business Services so that with groups like Queens Together, we can continue to make New York City a choice for restaurants and small businesses alike. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now turn to Alex. Alex, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Thank you guys so much for having me. And I just want to start off by saying I apologize to Councilwoman Brewer. I said some unkind things. And I think she's a beautiful person inside and out, and I'd like to make it up to her if I could ever buy her dinner, you know, do something that's obviously, you know, not illegal or anything. But hey, I want to talk about the street vendors for a second. Listen, I actually give lunch to a lot of these vendors. And this is the problem, the vendors have the right to work, but they also need to be protected. They have the right to be safe. And the problem is, is we need like some sort of defense force because Julio, one of my best hot dog guys, got stabbed by a fentanyl addict 17 times. Luckily, Julio's Venezuelan. He was an incredible soccer player. He has cardiovascular strength. He dated my wife for a little bit. He's an incredibly strong man. He's able to live. But he could have been a casualty. He could have been a casualty in this horrible corrupt system that we have of police officers that don't want to do their job. And listen, I know the NYPD force is stretched thin. I understand they've had a record number, a level of myocarditis and pericarditis after the inoculation. But listen, they still need to be there for us. We still need them for us. And I know their hearts are enlarged. But at this time and age, these vendors need to be protected. They deserve the same rights as everybody, you know, in this community. So this is why I stand here and I ask you, as every council member. We had to create some sort of fentanyl zombie defense force where if we see somebody spurging out...
Okay, I'm going to cut this off. This is a serious hearing. It's not a mockery so that you can do this. Sergeant, please mute. Thank you.
These vendors are getting, these vendors are getting cut down. So don't cut me off, because I will sue you guys.
Yeah, we don't do that in this chamber. We're not making a mockery. So you can use this for your television show. We don't do that, just to be clear, okay? This is a serious hearing with serious questions. Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
I believe we've now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we've inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. And I will call on you in the orders of hands raised.
Okay, we have one other person.
Okay, so we will call on Guy Yedwob. Guy, you can begin when the sergeant calls time.
Starting time.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair, and the committee for the opportunity to speak today. Before I share my prepared remarks... Before I share my prepared remarks, there are a few questions from the committee about the amount of storefront vacancy within the city, and I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the legislation that this committee and the council passed, requiring the Department of Finance to track vacancy. There actually is data that's on the Open Data Portal, and I'm happy to share that information, you know, to the interested council members. What I've come here today to talk about on behalf of the League of Independent Theater and all volunteer advocacy organization for cultural small businesses across the city is that art small businesses are small businesses, just like any others. Support every dollar that supports small theaters, small dance halls, small rehearsal spaces, not only supports those small businesses themselves, but also the network of nearby businesses, bodegas, retail, and restaurants that are benefited by increased foot traffic. So where small businesses are concerned about the loss of foot traffic because of office use reduction, theater and dance is still drawing people out onto main streets throughout the five boroughs. So we ask the members of this committee to join with the Committee on Cultural Affairs to increase the baseline funding for the Department of Cultural Affairs. Baselining the $40 million from last year and adding an additional $10 million will ensure that artistic small businesses can continue to contribute to this city's economy. We also ask that the programs funded by the Committee on Small Business not discriminate against small businesses that are nonprofits. In particular, the incredibly valuable commercial lease assistance program currently excludes nonprofit small businesses. A commercial lease is a commercial lease regardless of whether it's for an art gallery or a bodega. As we've heard today, the need for commercial lease assistance is still deeply felt in the community and growing. Please allow nonprofit small businesses to receive this support, just like any other small business in the city. Thank you for your time. We look forward to testifying again soon, hopefully at a hearing before this committee on commercial rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov.
Great, and that closes the hearing. Thank you.